Childcare funds, we get a larger reimbursement on that. And then I'm also seeking approval to have our juvenile register part of her wages reimbursed through the child care fund. So those are the only real changes that I'm making. So you don't have any other questions about child care fund? It goes into the fact that number one, it is on that list still here. And so the approval process is usually mid to late August. And I just asked for the vote to approve with the chairman's sign once I break out from the state. Or so we.
Move to second, Carolyn and Terry. Any other comments, questions? Oh. I have a question.
Oh.
Oh, that question. Um. We're all updated on our current reimbursement stuff.
Yes.
We don't lie hanging up there in the.
Unless, so sometimes it's slow on the front of four reimbursements because we're waiting for guidance from them. They don't hurry. In fact, sometimes we get a. Because they also work on the different here than we do. But every time I get my, you may have gotten a E grams last week. That was the most recent one that I had sent. I don't know if you received that or not, but that was the most recent one that they've sent me for reimbursement from the board. Yeah, and I do a drug court reimbursement every quarter.
Okay.
So the last one was done at the end. In July.
Okay.
So I do have corrections on one claim. Probably one you're not going to know for a whole lot, but it's a correction on the SCAO drug court claim. And that one. Um. It's roughly nine or 10,000 dollars. So that's.
And I only ask for the process.
Yep.
Two minutes. How does that work?
Yeah, so for the the BJA drug court, which is that same one, or um. Running out of public court and a state one, I run the BGA one, I put state one just because it makes sense that we're doing all the same. Figure. And so those are four of them. And then for FOC, child care funds every month, we send in a 207 every month to that. And she goes through those. So um, we have a quarterly line that we do. That we do right now for what pays for part of our district population officer Rebecca Juvenal for Brian Brings, which is the CJO down to. And then other than that, yeah.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Uh, uh, roll call. Obviously. If you're done, sorry.
I am. Dax?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Small?
Yes.
From it, yes. That was less than I already have.
I wasn't going to say that. You said it anyway. Um, all right. Thanks, Jennifer. Appreciate it. All right. Um, now we can do the unfinished business. I already said that drew my eye. I don't want to talk about this. Well, here we are. The table kiosk motion from two eighteen.
Jennifer, I would like to ask what this would name as an unshaped or as a table, I've been. Because it is my understanding that security. Here legal community access. Monday, I think. How much is it working?
Was that a more. A table, continue table or actually we don't bring it out of table and save it on table, right?
Yeah. They'll bring it out of the table.
Are you ready to say that? We do have. Skewed. I want him. All right, he's on good way out there. New table. Change floor or. Next. New business, write the claim. Look at this.
No, we're going to be out here for the best, yeah, right?
Yeah, sure.
Make motion to approve preauthorized claims and the claims presented for payment. Change July sixteenth to twenty five and August fifth to twenty five. Check numbers one five eight, two four eight, two one five eight, four two nine. And E checks two six seven eight to two six nine five. For a grand total of eight hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred sixty two dollars and seven cents.
Four.
We're just second to eight hundred thirty thousand dollars, okay?
Yeah, so your bachelor to. So.
That's a little bigger.
I'm sorry, who was the second to me?
Carolyn.
Thank you. Got to run it. What's going on? Um, okay, any more comments, questions? Roll call.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Dax.
Yes.
From it, yes.
Next up. School resource officer contract, Scott, if you would. You want to say please service?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so I mentioned at the last meeting, this is just an extension of the um, the contract, and the extension lines up with the. All right. It lines up with the uh, grant that the school receives to pay us out of. For that, and uh, our agreement with them expired one year before their grant is, so we will need to extend it for another year. Um, and I obviously sent the entire contract for you all to review instead of just the updated ones. I sent the updated. Uh, two page extension. That's all the extension is, in same terms and guidelines of the existing contract. So. Sorry about the confusion from your brother, but I appreciate you. I compassion that so that I could uh, straighten that out. Again, no change in terms, just extension one year, and the prosecutor has already looked at that, or prosecutor has already looked at that, and then.
But it's something we can put in. The uh, school research officer contract and all the rest of the church.
All support.
You need it? Do you need me to sign it?
Yeah.
Uh. Hey, thanks for working on all the, you know, through all the negotiations and stuff, but I appreciate it.
Don't be sore that next year too.
Yeah, I understand, but.
But yeah, no problem.
I saw her in the sidelines.
Since there is uh, money involved, we actually have a. Sure, or is I bold on it first?
Oh, oh, yeah, probably.
I thought I did. I supported it.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Dax.
Yes.
From it, yes.
Go, go, stay. There you go.
Oh, Scott.
I would like to get their signatures and get these to me.
Can I get original signatures from you?
Oh, no. My county boy township record was thirty five.
So that I think one uh, and filed. And then one is part of their packet.
Is yours signed by um? David O'Connor?
Yeah.
Not that. I'll bring this one.
Shall we take a poll with the panelists?
We don't have that. Well, we have a year. There.
Thanks, Scott.
Yes. Next uh, item is the soil erosion position at the building department. We had a recommendation from. You don't want to leave anyone alone.
All right, well, we'll start here. Um. We have a recommendation for our open position for a soil erosion inspector. Um. We uh, Dan met with them. And we talked it over and I think we agreed that. We're gonna go. Uh. For uh, permit. Uh, it's not in here. Yeah, it's on the back here, what we have listed. Um. And forty five permits on file that still are actively going on, and we're gonna give him a thousand dollars additional. Which is, I mean, it's just a sweet deal. So. We want to do each one at a time. Try to do this one and then.
Well, let's look through the appointment or whatever.
Like I'd like to make motion to. Appoint Dan Fair as our soil erosion and.
It's not the appropriate to approve the uh. Position. And those figures, those doll figures.
You can do it all one shot, sure.
Yeah, I'll do math, the figures that we have written there.
Okay, I'll support that thing.
Move to second. Any more questions or comments? Okay. Roll call.
Brady.
Yes.
From it.
Yeah.
Dax.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Then the second one, actually out stepped you on it. You were in on the interview with Dan.
Yeah. Um.
You had like four.
We, we received multiple applicants. Four uh, were interviewed. And uh, the last one was yesterday, which was Jennifer Maynard. And um, she did have some background building knowledge. Um, and she had some uh, great. Computer experience, especially basically she uh, in the military did the um, servers built them from the ground up. And she would assign the IPs and the email addresses and then. She's a great computer knowledge and skills. Um, and she's very flexible right now to begin training with Angela. Uh, she was the one applicant that could start like right away. And that's kind of. You're in a crunch. Um, some people couldn't start until after Angelo was already gone, which unfortunately um. But I will, I will contact them and we did, we did do the four interviews and that was the most likely key that, and I scooped in and suggested. They, that we were.
I like motion for real candidates, but the department had the equally permanent support. Any more questions or comments? I liked this part about the experience tonight, you started with this, you know, we'll use across the nation. Oh, that's nice. I mean, uh, I think. You know, we had some opportunities there, so. Um, that being said, uh, roll, roll call.
Dax?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Small?
Yeah.
Brian?
So I forgot to add this to the top of the list, but who I am doing new business is the uh. Ritual half day off. On Friday before Labor Day weekend. Uh.
No, I, I was surprised, Carolyn. I didn't see one either.
Oh.
We don't usually always do.
You think they don't attend, they're correct?
Well, I should go, yeah. Let's send that a bit on. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I would tell you. Has suggested by the chair.
All support. Yes.
That's not fair. The court made it looks. And roll call.
Small.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Howard, you said from it.
I know.
Yes.
Dax.
Yes, but she is too crafty, court made. Oh. Have to have slippery weekend. All right, signature board. So. Actually, we had a little I find it. I mean, uh. Survey this. So I was let do it. This is a bit. All right. Otherwise. We uh. We're gonna have to thank the. There was some stuff brought forward, but we haven't resolved all the conflicts within their budgets, so bottom line said it was great like that. Uh, nothing to really report, friends. Unless she goes, says opposite.
Um, the only thing that comes to my mind is um, Tom did ask us to adjust his budget for the new temporary prosecuting committee.
Right.
There. I did do the asshole, his budget was three five thousand. So other than that. Much having been lost.
Thank you. Personnel, well, again, all right, so. Personnel, uh. We're starting to carry and uh. Greg, you're gonna pick the point on the interview, on the negotiations for both the uh. Police officers and EMS. Uh, both dates are yet to be. Uh, chosen, I think, we had something, yes, some dates. Anyway, they're charged that for the sake of. Um, you know. You know, the topical negotiations, so. Whereas that progresses the, for the right experience. Uh. Also for personnel, obviously, not for the department stuff, that's already done. Uh. No, I understand. So uh, app has been able to send uh. To all the commissioners. And. The treasurer and. Work. The contract for potential. Uh, to retain uh, Tom as our appointed uh. Attorney for. And I will send that to you for your review, but I'm just making aware that's coming to you, that by the next meeting or whatever. Uh. One of the reasons why I would recommend at this point is that, uh, you know, sort of the views, the prosecutors are prepared, like, uh. Maybe in this case. It's not a forever contract, obviously, if you change your minds going down the road, but in this case, keep Tom, the time being. Just an idea and a thought. Nobody's really come forward with any other ideas at this point between now and next week. Some ideas might come up, so. Well, right now. Well. Point call. Next. Well, you, so I don't want to do enough, just getting the information right now, and how much it's gonna cost and everything else. So I'm gonna be able to review all the information and we'll make it on the new business next, next year. I know, I don't, I want to be responsible about it. Because. Can't just. Yes. I don't know how much it's gonna cost, but let's do it, so. Uh, anyway, that's personnel in a nutshell. Moving on to the treasurer's report.
I mean, bear with me, I just want to um.
Excuse me, but you're gonna have to talk up.
I'm trying.
Okay.
Oh, they. Yeah, no, Dave's gonna shut the hair up. Here.
Excuse me, let me turn off this. Here, hey.
Oh, that is. Yeah.
Okay, I just um, I just wanted to start off by saying um, thank you to Cheryl Franks for all her hard work and dedication to Alcona County within the last. Twenty-three years. She served five years as Greenwich Township Treasurer, six years as the county chief deputy treasurer, and twelve years as the county treasurer. Her last day in office was Friday, August first. I just want to say that I'm extremely grateful and appreciative to have had the privilege to work side by side with Cheryl as her chief deputy for the last twelve years. I want to say Cheryl's hard work and dedication, integrity in her elected positions will never beat the battle. I wish her all the best in her next chapter of life, and she will be greatly missed. I would also like to thank um, honorable Judge Rowley. For taking the time out of her busy schedule this Friday, August first, to swear me in as county treasurer, and email Trumbo Holmes as chief deputy treasurer. I also want to thank um, Cheryl Franks, Tom Waikel, Elizabeth Free. Commissioner Carol Broman, Brooke Summers, and Tina Schrader from the clerk's office who attended and witnessed us to be sworn in. Amy and I are very thankful and appreciative for their support, kindness, and professionalism. Thank you very much from the bottom of our heart. Now onto track at this point. Um. I do want to let the board know and the community know that um, Alcona County tax foreclosure public auction is scheduled for September third. Um, it is an online auction. People can go to www dot tax dash sale dot info. Or um, to register, all information is on that website. September third, yeah.
Not November eighth.
Yeah, that's from going next. Um, Alcona has a total of fourteen foreclosed properties that will be in the auction. So we don't have a whole lot. Um, our numbers are down due to a few reasons. We work really hard in our office to try to um. Work with um. Taxpayers in regards to try and get more on a payment plan. Um. Because our whole goal is not to foreclose, we'd like to see people stay in their homes. So we have got quite a few people on our payment plan now, so it's working out very well. Um. And we'll continue to do that. Uh, the. County treasurer's office is definitely um, receiving township treasurer payments for the twenty-five tax collection. Um, they are trickling in. Um, when you look at what I give you as far as with the cash summary balance report for all the funds that are in front of you. You can see that the general fund is in the negative. Um, those payments have not reflected that fund yet. Hopefully, within the next few months, it will uh. Will improve, but um. The general fund is still in the negative there. Um, and as far as revenues and expenditures go for the general fund, general fund has only received about twenty point seven percent. Of revenue for this year, but the expenditures are up about fifty-three percent. So um. Hopefully, a lot more revenue will start coming in, and expenditures hopefully will decrease a little bit. Um, last but not least, the. All the required reports are completed and uploaded to the state of Michigan on our audit. So everything is finalized there, and we are good to go with the state of Michigan, so. That's all I got to say.
She went on the foreclosure on the um, payment. Let's say, are those three-year payment plans or what?
It varies with, it varies. It varies on where they're at.
Let's arbitrarily take a two-year one, just for the stretch of purposes. They pay for the first thirty-two months and they, then they miss a payment.
We can't miss a payment.
What happens if they miss a payment?
Um, they sign an agreement that they have to make a payment every month. And if not, then it goes, we don't, we'll foreclose on it on the next foreclose cycle.
Next.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's like.
It's not paid at the full. At that time.
Oh, okay. That's just what.
We, yeah, if anything, I mean. Everybody's just been, it's been working out well. They're making their payments. If there are some that can't make that. Even agreement, let's say if it's a four hundred dollar payment. Um, we just adjust things, and as long as they make a payment that month. Um. Just the board and. The goal is to get it all paid off, so. Right now, no, yeah. Then. Exactly, yeah, and everybody obviously has their situations, you know.
I like the spirit of keeping people on their own.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Special report.
Um, yesterday, Trina and I had lunch with Jennifer Weinstein with Aquisher um, over at Teresa's. And uh, she didn't have the percentage increase quite yet from them. Um, she's kind of just hearing background information right now, but she's thinking it could be upwards, everything up to fourteen and seventeen percent. Um, nothing's in stone yet. Also, that we've been with them uh, Food Care Network for over a year. We can go back to Priority Health now and get a quote, whereas last year we could not do that because we had just lost Priority Health. Trina's also reached out to Mesa for a quote. Um. Other than that, there wasn't, she didn't really have too much more to report. One thing that Trina did request, uh, and this will be a total board decision, but our long-term disability. You have to be off for a hundred and eighty days for that to even kick in. So uh. It's really only been utilized by a couple of people, and short-term disability on the employer's portion is cheaper than long-term disability. Um, but so we're just looking in a, Trina requested a quote from Jennifer, who she's gonna prepare that if you guys want to look at that. Um, it, it. More cohesive with your FMLA, utilizing your sick time, and as soon as that's done and you used all that up, that short-term disability is paying for you. Um, so just an option, something that you guys might want to look at. Uh, there wasn't anything new with uh, the. Vision or the dental through MetLife. Um, the only differences, and this was just from outside of the courthouse and speaking to some of my friends. That uh, they have Delta Dental and multiple places are dropping Delta because they are only at a sixty percent reimbursement payback rate. Where MetLife is at.
where MetLife is at like ninety-two percent. Um, so that kind of hindsight, when we first lost them and everybody was newly dealing with MetLife, kind of worked out in the long run over the la- the last few couple of years that we've been with them. Um, some, some carriers are still sticking hardcore with Delta, but a lot of them are, are dropping, dropping now. Um, the second round of jury qualification questionnaires went out and the jury board will be meeting probably late next week because that first round of jurors, uh, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six year going to effect on September first, which is approaching quickly, um. And we have multiple jury trials scheduled. At just a, just a time, we have one tomorrow that may or may not go now at this point. And, um, given the amount of defendants and grand fees that, uh, the forty that were originally called for a civil case, which is the final, uh, is probably gonna like quadruple. Uh, we might be having almost two hundred some with, or, uh, jurors in to, to, because there are so many defendants in the case. And, um, I don't know why, it's just an abundance of jury trials scheduled right now. Um, lots of our HR changes also in the office, lots, lots of changes, tons. Um, and then the waste management plan, we've been getting multiple, uh, communications on that and it sounds like Terry has, I can't remember her name, but he said she's gonna be here to present. So we can, we can reach on that at the next meeting. And then, um, one thing that just stood here and dawned on me is looking at the calendar when I changed it. I don't know what you wanna do about the August twentieth meeting. Um, we are going to a clerks conference the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. Our conference probably ends at eleven o'clock and it's about a two and a half hour drive. Let's set it really close for us to get back for the meeting that afternoon. So I don't know if you can push it back to maybe starting even at two o'clock. To allow us at least three hours to get here, because it's in Mount Pleasant. Well, it's not too bad of a drive, but.
No, but still you need time to do it safely.
And have your packets ready to go the Friday before.
What's the alternative to having somebody take minutes? Is there alternatives or somebody taking minutes if you're?
Yeah, there's, there's two board liaisons, Carol and some minutes before for me when I was new at them. It's up to you guys. I mean, if it's recorded, we can still do the minutes, that's no problem. But just to do the motions and the roll calls.
Next week, dude, maybe we should push it to Thursday. Oh, well, let's start. We'll start the presentation at one thirty, then we'll recess until the clerk show.
What's the presentation?
Let's do that. We'll start at regular time. We'll start at regular time and then we'll go to recess until somebody comes and fulfills the clerk.
Okay. I mean, we'll be trying to long shoulder right after.
Yeah, let's do that. I agree with that. Anything else, Stephanie?
Um, you want me to put prosecuting attorney's contract on the next agenda as well?
Yeah, please.
Okay. And, yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, sheriff's report.
I was gonna volunteer to do minutes for you. Just have to keep the editorial part out there. We have one more. We will check up tomorrow. It's gonna be a good, so, so you didn't do better the day after the last meeting? Pretty short, pretty short update this week, cause, uh, we've already covered a couple of things, but this week's the fair week, if you're not aware. Today I have my, uh, my staff with some victim services out there doing fingerprint ID kits for the children. We did a hundred last year. I was hoping to do that this year, but when I left here a little while ago, we'd already done a lot of the kids there last year. There's no reason to take fingerprints and ID. You know, kids that we just did last year, so we're passing along. I borrowed the ice cream truck from Alpine County and it's down there and we're handing out ice cream to the children. Uh, I prefer they give up their DNA and fingerprints first, but it's not very weird. Um, both projects, the fingerprints and the ice cream were sponsored by our local, uh, financial institutions, here in Community Bank, Alpine, Alcoa Credit Union, and North Bank Credit Union, all donations towards that, so I appreciate them doing that. Thursday, Carolyn, we're doing the L E P C, L E T P meeting, and the nine-one-one authority board meeting right at the same time as the Forgotten Eagles Ride. So, uh, we will have a different driver for you. Unfortunately, I won't be here. I have a. Yeah, and the, and those ones go pretty quick if you, if you remember, so they could be posted over when we get there. You understand, Sheriff's can't fill in for me. I have one more appointment tomorrow to get cleared up there, there, before I'm out of the woods, but, um, again, we do that at the fairgrounds, which is kinda neat to see, uh, the community can see us out there uh, in action at one of our meetings, uh, or actually three of our meetings, and see how business is conducted. Sometimes people poke their nose and check in on that, sometimes they don't. Two weeks ago, July twenty-sixth, was the Commune Marathon of Trenton, Southwest, Alpona County, if you're not aware, that is a huge deal. There are thousands of people that follow that along, um, and it doesn't touch much of our population because it's pretty remote over there, but there's a lot of people that follow that and put out emergency patrol in the wee hours of the morning to watch that go through and make sure it goes safe. And that's part of the collaborative agreement with the committee that puts on that race, along with the Michigan T N R, who we agreed to provide security and resources for that event to get placed, as do all the other agencies along the rivers. We already talked about the school resource contract, uh, we're gonna talk about the kiosk and part of security some more later. Um, as I usually mentioned, we're at eight hundred and fifty hours of overtime for my staff this year. That's about eighty-five per and that's about two weeks of overtime that everybody's worked so far this year. And with that said, uh, I have at least one deputy who's applied to work somewhere else. And that leaves us in a real conundrum, because if he gets that position, um, we're gonna have to be talking about twenty-four hour coverage or whether we're having school resource officer. I just saw, I, the margins for my staff are now, so then I'm not gonna be able to pull. Um, so unfortunately, I'm sitting here crossing my fingers, hoping he doesn't get that position. And with that said, I'm gonna start actively looking at if I can still be hired. Um, and it really is not in the budget, but we've talked about it before. The other, the other option is there is not a whole lot of people floating around out there who are police officer certified that are not either a troublemaker or aren't working somewhere else already. So the other alternative is looking to hire somebody to put to the police academy. That is not my preferred method. I prefer high-stakes, ready to hit the road running. The reality, the reality is, I just don't think there's a lot of them out there, so. I've got a couple options in mind, but we gotta, we gotta look to hire some people here sooner than later, because we're, we're on that, my margin right now.
Like four K?
Terry's not certified anymore. He probably have to go back to his research course. And, uh, I don't know about his test-taking abilities, but he'd probably do this.
We'll get you.
It's only a half mile, but it's a shuttle run, it's not straight, it's back and forth, and it's a lot, shuttle run is a lot different than a half mile. Maybe not for apples, but for, for the sheriff you do.
What? Where did you start that?
I'll move along. Uh, i- if anybody has any discussions about, uh, jail discussions about how, how we'd like to proceed on that or what we're looking at, uh, I, I'd like to proceed with hiring a couple more people for the first of the year. Um, I put that in my budget for next year, not a full operation, but like a half, halftime operation. So that, really, in, in a nutshell, what's happening is when my deputies arrest somebody, they're gone for two hours to take them to the toll booth. And, and unfortunately, I hate saying this in public meetings, but I leave the road uncovered in Alpine County. There's, there's one or none working here in Alpine, but I do that. If I staff the jail with one person twenty-four seven, we can lock them up there and take them down when it's convenient for us. Um, instead of, so, so it's kind of a balancing act. Would we hire a bunch more deputies to build the road? Or do we hire a couple jailers to at least lock them up here and not take the jailer or the deputies off the road if you're out there? So that's kind of the discussions I'd look at and like to have, um, and, and we can do that at some point if you're interested.
Yeah, jail, uh, staff also will be certified for road patrol.
Matter of fact, you can, you can be certified in both. I am, I maintain that. And there are a few others in Northeast Michigan. Matter of fact, uh, Commissioner Johnson's nephew works at Alpine County, used to work in our jail, was dual certified. Uh, but there are not too many of us around that are dual certified. I always maintain my jail certification just because of, you know, events like this or if something came up. Um, or for some reason I wasn't able to work the road anymore. But yeah, you can hold both, but it's, again, training, training has to meet both, both requirements, which I, I manage to do every year, as does Johnson up in Alpine County. Uh, but they can. It'd be, in an ideal world, you have a jail full of certified police officers, in an emergency, you can, you know, send all the troops. Uh, the reality is it's just too hard by them, and you're not keeping certified police officers working in jail. That's the other realities, they're, they're wanting to get out of the road.
But you're also talking a lot of training here. Jail or training is one, probably one.
If you're twenty hours, they have, well, it's, it's four weeks, their academy is four weeks and it's twenty hours a year after that. In, in a lot of the training, as you're probably aware, is that crosses over, you know, like your CPR first aid or defensive tactics, firearms use, all that transfers over, uh, to either category, and that's, that's how I maintain, and I take credit in both categories. The only other thing I had is that, uh, my Homeland Security Grant for the radios is coming through. Uh, so probably the next couple of meetings or so, uh, when I get a little bit further along in the process, I'm gonna have to ask for a thirty thousand dollar budget amendment uh, for revenue for thirty thousand coming in from the grant, thirty thousand going out to buy those radios. Uh, that, that could be a couple of meetings from now, but I just wanted to get some on that. Okay, I think I mentioned before that that's, we're gonna do half, half this year, half next year. And that's a huge lift for us, that's sixty thousand dollars that we're not gonna have to pay for to get incredible radios that are being provided by the state and federal. All I see on my list.
I'd like to just express appreciation for the sheriff. By the way, to your force, I think it's helpful. Um, it helps us be up all the more to speed. And I just, I imagine this is a thought, and I appreciate it.
And too, I, I appreciate Tony being able to do that. Um, I've had, I've had great ideas of bringing a, a staff member in each time and, and displaying them and talking about them and their accomplishments and, and where they come from and what they've done. Unfortunately, they're always working, so I have to drag them in off the road or haul them in under the office or something like that, so.
Reach out to Kurt and I both. As soon as you're ready, you know, we'll start setting dates.
Sounds good. And we'll set some dates for negotiation. I, I, uh, keep that, keep that down a road just a little bit, because we're so darn busy through, through, uh, like, okay. Um, but they're, they're bugging too hard for negotiation dates, but they've just sent, sent their letters of, uh, quite interesting stories, so. I'll be back at the fairgrounds and there's a barbecue shop waiting right across from mine. I'm giving out free ice cream. I'll put that barbecue across the street, it's very good. Can I tell you something recommended from the sheriff and Mount Moritz Academy who's familiar with them?
Um, don't have much, and Sheriff covered much of what I would have otherwise covered. Um, I have.
Oh, you're done? Okay.
Well, that's it, Sheriff.
Save your thing, so.
Yes.
I'm here for recognition, Terry. People don't show up to pass something. Well, you did. This is your committee thing.
Uh, yeah, I tend to help me. Um, anybody who needs transportation, give them a call. They are willing to work with anybody. There is a fee, of course, we didn't, but they are, they'll work, uh.
And that's be with me.
That's, I don't see. You know, they're. Well, when you think about it, however, going to, they can't just say.
I would think it would be based on my.
They're just, they're, they would have to talk to you and arrange a time schedule because maybe boss of the dog or anything either, so. But I think the thing is, the, that I'm getting from the director up here is that she wants to give Angela Collyman and that she wants to work with anybody and.
Can they do a flyer or something, so we can distribute that?
I'll probably ask her to come down and have some patients.
All right, and with that, if you were gonna fly something, so we can hand it out, the people can begin to learn about her and utilize, hopefully.
I tend to the, uh, Northeast Michigan Corrections Advisory Board. They're cutting money because of the state. And them, Scott, was cutting money roughly the same. Uh, it sounds like most of the programs are going on, but uh, as far as the jails are concerned, it looks like they're reusing, coming down, so. That'll be an interesting issue. I did, I have last meeting, I'll say, I knew that Hunt was their biggest, well, their biggest bust that they've ever made, that, uh. They, uh, did the, well, they say they're one of their biggest busts. I heard it was cocaine, but now I've also heard it's meth with, um, and they put down guns, cash, all the goodies, and they, they went after them. Um, but it was a big bust, and it was kind of, one of the things they kind of laughed about. Hunt just got back up full staffing, really good. They were missing, but these guys, three of them, had only been on duty a little bit. They go on this bus, and I mean, it's big, of course, and the tenant, uh, uh, was there, so he's got a whole bunch of guys that are anxious to go to work now. Gun always had a hope, because they had a big, big bus. And that's all I got.
Oh, see, a library meeting, big there, um, Northern Michigan Association of Townies meeting, um, John Armine, been there for thirty-some years. Is, actually, he retired from MSU E um, over a year ago, but he stayed on as our liaison. Um, he finally found somebody named Jimmy Johnson, not the race car driver. Um, he's with Matt, who's gonna be our liaison leader for Matt. So, uh, anything who is interested, we are, we're not meeting next month or this month, we are going to the, um, Dark Sky Museum in, in County. So, and I had a department, uh, department health meeting. Um, they are needing money. They haven't came to us in a long time. Uh, and they are going to be coming to us, they, they're recommending a ten percent increase in, uh, what we give for the four counties. I think I have a. Yeah, something like that, I'd have it here. Um, and then, um, watch this webinar for public village. Put on by Prosecutor's Association, but that's it.
So, uh, Target Alpine has reached out to Craig and then me. Monday and Tuesday, we received information about programs coming out, that they wanted to get a sign out on some paperwork, I forwarded to everybody. Um, at this point, you know, having one day to review it, really, for to try to, uh, pull it out or anything like that. I'm just saying that because it's, I wanna make sure it's on. I brought it up to everybody, but I did email you the information. Uh, so what we're gonna do here is after public comment, we're gonna go into closed session, but then after the closed session, we're gonna go back into session to finish to review the handbook. Oh, well, however it works, that's what we're gonna do, just before we everybody. Oh, well, however it works, that's what we're gonna do. Just before we everybody, they say, hey, so there, we didn't know they were still gonna be there. So. Full transparency. That being said. Critications in your packet are viewed at your leisure. Public comment?
And I just need to say, um, closed session, uh Tom Wipfel. Is going to be present for that and he has a final pre-trial at two thirty. So he wanted me to give him a call if we're gonna adjourn and then um.
How long is this pre-trial gonna happen?
I don't know. He was gonna have that phone line and do it.
We can, I probably do, we, we all need.
It'll take us that long to finish up. Workshop.
And this.
Oh.
We can do it right now. Got ten minutes.
And we can adjourn the meeting because the workshop was posted and it separates.
Well, we wanted to recess the meeting so when you come back, you know.
Oh, true, yes, yes, for full session.
So let's do the last second of pub- public comment, then we'll, oh, I already did.
I think that was it.
You were the public comment, yeah, and then we can recess until Tom's ready to come back in.
Or do we gotta do it right now?
What?
We're kind of in the book?
That's not fair to. Dragging down their phones. Yeah, less than ten minutes.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Let's just finish up the book while we're here.
Or we can do, or if he was available right now, I don't think it's gonna be here more than ten minutes.
I mean, oh. Yeah, but I, I don't think that's fair. He's walked me into a pre-trial and he needs to be able to be focused on that. Not on what just happened, that it may be for his own protection.
So if it's okay with rest creatures, I don't make motion to recess until Tom is available.
Support.
Okay. Come back in for the full session. Oh, and then between that time, if we wanna finish up this book, we can do that. Sounds good. I made motion supported all the favor.
Hi.
I'll close motion carries.
Aaron, yes, will you let me know?
I'm super sorry.
My bad.
You're good. We forgot. Anyway, to re- reiterate, uh, corner county, ALGASD, the uh motion has been provided by Adam and seconded by Perry uh to approve of the contract with the township. Oh. Uh money broke off.
Yes.
Yes.
From yes small.
Yeah.
Brady.
Yes. There's that. Or you'll. That way we get your information. Then we can close out of this meeting, go and finish our work session.
Workshop.
We have one page left, so.
Just adjusting, I'm I'm on seven forty nine course, it's the very, very line of revolver.